What do you think?
What is R two?
It's residential two.
But we don't.
It could be a standard thing.
You have one minute.
Yeah, they didn't have you down here, not being there.
I know, I was. We're abstaining.
I'm gonna hear you, Brian. Give me your name, John, John Stewart. Stewart, yep.
Let me go and know who you are now.
Yep.
Just give him that.
I can whack the gavel and start.
All right. Everybody here? Y'all good? You ready? Hey, welcome to the regular meeting of the Bethel Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is scheduled for six to eight P M. We would need a majority vote of the planning board to go beyond eight o'clock. With that in mind, we have two items on the agenda to consider this evening. Under communication, we will hear a presentation from the Northern Forest Center on future development of seventy-one Broad Street. And ironically, a building permit in the historic district for fifty-four Broad Street. Before we proceed, just like to remind everyone that all questions need to go to the chair. So.
They've got seventy-seven to work Broad Street on things here, and you've got seventy-one here. What is it?
Our tax records indicate seventy-one. Is it?
We've seen seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-seven in a variety of places, so.
So as they proceed, I probably would put it under, like when they get on actual actions, I'd put it under their map and lot if there's dispute about the address, and we can have coenforcement looking at the actual.
Yeah. There were other buildings in there at one point.
Yes, yeah, that's understandable.
All right. I'd like to declare quorum. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes? I know Laurie's found one correction. She was not present at the last meeting.
It doesn't say she was there, it just doesn't.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, okay. But it, there was a, there's a section for absent, and I was listed there, so I thought. Just for the record.
Make them all into a pool. As permitted.
Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Thank you. I'm abstaining from that.
That's right. Okay. So.
You go to vote them.
Oh, did we not vote? I was turned around.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Courtney.
Or maybe they did, I was looking down.
No, I was turning around, okay. Baltimore. So. Northern, the first item on the agenda is Northern Forest Center. Is that correct, the title of that? What, what am I thinking of, Northern Forest Alliance?
Not that.
It's a different thing?
Very different, yes.
Okay. So you're just gonna give us a little presentation of.
Yeah.
Nothing's actionable, is it?
No.
You know, and I think with a project of this size, it's good to start with a little overview. So that would be, the floor is all yours.
Okay, do you want us to come up front or?
Sure, yeah. This is a very, very casual meeting tonight, we don't have a whole lot going on. We'll come right up, whatever works best for you.
Um. So. Uh, so yeah, so Northern Forest Center. Northern Forest Center purchased a property that is somewhere in the seventy to seventy-seven street back in December. It is a ten-acre lot with the Garing House sitting on it, and there are no other buildings on the property. Our organization, Northern Forest Center, purchased this with the intent to redevelop the building into apartments for long-term rentals for people working in the community and to be priced appropriately. And our intent, eventually, later down the line, is to also develop out the rest of the property with the same mission, to have high-quality, long-term, year-round rental properties. So what we have done is taken on the house first. Our goal is to restore the building because it is such a historic and community asset that we wanted to bring it back to life for the community and put it into a use that the community desperately needs right now. So our organization has done this and is doing this in about a dozen communities across our region. So we are working in the Adirondacks and in Vermont, New Hampshire, and in Maine. So we have some experience doing this, and we're also currently doing this in some other communities. As a regional community and economic development organization, we do a lot of things. This is one, one of them. And we have picked very specific communities to do this level of intensive redevelopment in a space where we know that this kind of development will have an impact in the community. So we just wanted to share, we're, we're super close to feeling like we're ready to submit our application to the planning board for the redevelopment project. So we wanted to share where we are so far and find out, you know, are, how on track are we? Do people have questions about it? Are there things that we might need to adjust? So I'm gonna let Anna, from our architect partner, from Woodhall, share what the plan is and, and sort of walk you through the documents, and then we can just answer questions, and we'll see what we need to take back to the planning board's to speak for this project. And I will say, the building is on a national register, historic places, and we are going to be pursuing historic tax credits as well, as part of our plan.
So historic tax credits, you're a non.
We will have to sell the credits.
Okay. This is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? What is, you said you had very, chose areas very specifically. What is your criteria in choosing an area?
So we have looked, we've, we've picked communities where, A, we have some history and relationships organizationally. The Northern Forest Center has been working in Bethel actually for, almost from the beginning, a really long time. In one way or another, there's been, there was an office here in town for many years. I actually worked for the center when it had an office here in Bethel, and left and did other things and went back. We are very heavily involved in the Music Way Initiative locally, and there's the Main West Initiative, which has a lot of things happening in health and education, and economic development, conservation, kind of working collaboratively with people. So look for places where we are already pretty invested, and then in a place where we know that a project like this, because it's been shown as a need, would, could actually make a difference even though, you know, we're not bringing in three hundred units. We're not solving the housing crisis in the region. But we are bringing some that will have an impact here, and that will make a difference for some people here, and that may also connect with other efforts that are going on in the community already. There may be some, you know, in projects we've done in the past in other places, we've seen other things, sort of, it's almost like a little bit of a catalyst for some other, either development or other projects that are related to, to really, you know, bolstering the community in some way. The other thing about Bethel is there's a significant outdoor recreation economy here, and that's one of our local areas in our organization, so that's a key. There's also the wood products industry, and that's another area of our work, so kind of like where all the things come together. And I'm here. I have my office here in town, so. So.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can continue. I am the project architect for Woodhall, and I'm gonna talk a little through the packet that you have. I'm sure everybody in town is pretty familiar with it. The Garing House, but yeah, it was built in eighteen ninety-six. Productive Gearing used as a psychotherapy clinic at the time for various, I think, neurological disorders, which was quite groundbreaking at the time. So it has a lot of history. It's in fairly good condition from the interior. Exterior is a little rough, but everything is repairable. So if you flip through to page three, you can see a preliminary site plan. In the top right corner is a preliminary master plan for the future development that Katie mentioned. This project and this site planner view process is only focusing on the Garing House and its immediate surroundings, and that, that lot in particular. And so on the site plan, we're showing what we're planning to do, sort of, in the future, but also for the immediate future for Garing House. We're proposing to keep the Broad Street connection to the house. However, we're hoping that we could have majority of the construction traffic come through Fairway Road, where there will eventually be a new connection to the future development. We're also providing new parking for the units themselves. And I'll talk a little bit more about the units as we go further along, but we're providing ten, ten parking spots. It's over one parking spot per unit. It's a three-story building with a full basement and wood construction. Let me see, am I forgetting anything? For stormwater treatment, we're looking at a few very, like, building-focused solutions, since there's a bit of a water issue in the basement, so we're looking at a foundation drain that would eventually be tied into the future development stormwater system. We'll have some exterior lighting to highlight the architectural characters of the building. We'll also provide side lighting for safety and easy access. Those are all coming, because it's a draft, as, as we can see, but we'll have those in the site plan review. So if you look to the next page. Oh, that's the basement. You can skip the basement. Nothing exciting there.
Storage.
Storage. In the first floor, we have three apartment units. We're keeping majority, or as much of the original character and structure as we can. I think it's all gonna be pretty much intact. It's in, it's good condition, and we'll restore it for the National Park Standards. There is two one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit. Two, the two one-bedroom units will be type B units meeting the Fair Housing Act requirements, so they'll be accessible. We'll also provide or install a new A D A lift on the side porch and new science. And yeah, thorough restoration of the existing character in the main spaces and throughout the units as well. There will be a, or we're proposing a small guest unit at the top right corner of the plan. Since that space was quite limited in size, we're hoping that we can provide like a guest unit for, for the tenants to book when a relative is in town or something, or for the building to rent out occasionally. If you flip to the next page.
Please play your game right now.
It's A one oh two. And it would be in the bottom left, it's labeled second floor plan.
On the second floor, we have three and a half apartment units, including bottom of a two-story unit. Similar approach, everything on this floor is gonna be kept as much intact and original as possible and restored. This includes three one-bedroom units and the bottom half of another one, so. And if we move up to the third floor.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, of course.
I'm not sure I understand access to this, to each of these areas. Is there a central access area that connects to all of them?
Of course, that's a good question. So you see the center area over here, that is the center staircase that would act, provide access to these units. As well as these, and there is also a second staircase in the wing, yes.
And then below this, I guess on the one we just looked at. So back here. Oh, yeah, we're back, where's the front of this building?
Front of the building is paged up still.
Okay, so this is where you'd be coming in?
Yes.
And this is where you would go up to the other end?
This is the main staircase, the monumental stair that's original to the building. And here's the.
So these, these things here are the only common areas? No, it's, most of it's not common areas, it's individual units.
Correct. Anything that's shaded slightly gray is common area.
And the others not? Okay, okay, thank you.
Great question, thank you. And then moving up to the third floor. The third floor has the least amount of actual original structure left. It also has some moisture problems, so we're proposing to tear out the drywall. Its majority of it is drywall, not lacquer plaster. Got, essentially got the attic and build a two-bedroom unit and the top of a one-bedroom unit, as you see on the right-hand side.
How many total units?
It is eight long-term units and then one, the one small guest unit.
So nine units total?
Nine units total, eight long-term. There's still a possibility that one guest space might be an office. That's, that's sort of the one piece we're not totally sure about, but as laid out, it could work as a studio slash guest space.
How many units? I thought we had to have two parking spaces.
Two and a half, I believe.
Isn't that right?
I'm not sure.
But you must have looked at that.
It's two and a half, I believe.
I don't believe that's accurate, but.
Uh, yeah.
It is, I mean, we have the space to provide it.
Well, yeah. Because there's no way that, even in a one-bedroom, there's not gonna be two vehicles.
Right.
Most likely anyway.
Is that in the historic section?
It's, it's still historic district, right?
It is within the historic district, yes. Yeah, so when they develop the back part, it's only the first two hundred feet of the lot that matter in the historic district. So once they get behind those two hundred feet.
Yeah, but the, that put the Garing Houses in the two hundred.
Yes, the Garing House is in a historic district. So multifamily dwellings. Setbacks, developments of. Parking requirements, two spaces per unit plus one additional space per three units. And then elderly or affordable is one space per unit plus one additional space per three units. So it'd be, if you go to one forty back seven, it would be in this.
So they fall into that.
For special regulation.
Well, it's because workforce or.
Nope, it's because it's a multifamily dwelling. So just look under multifamily dwelling requirements. So like, obviously setbacks aren't gonna matter because it's an existing building, but the parking would matter. Building height doesn't matter because it's existing. Utilities, I'm assuming. It is in a different section than standards. So it's in chapter one forty, it's just in a different section than where the standards are.
I'll be sure to check Ben and Mo if they get the court information.
I think in your, in the Garing House, you should be okay, there should be plenty of parking.
Let me say this, more than he's allowed that you got in.
Brian, you gotta ask Sherry questions and then.
Yeah, you have to go through me.
All the way through you?
Right, yeah. Well, in, in this, we're just sort of getting an overview, Brian. We're not getting into the nitty-gritty of this. Which is not something we, we often do unless it's a big project like this. So I'd like to defer any questions down the road for this particulars on this project. But you'll be, you'll be notified when that is, and you can.
No, he, he's not in a medium of butter, he actually would not be notified.
Oh, well, we'll tell you, Brian.
You won't answer.
We'll tell you when we, when we, when we go to the planning board with this. But this is just a preliminary overview, and it's hard not to jump into all the detail because I think it's exciting, but.
Sherry, can I compliment him on one thing?
It's a compliment, sure.
I like the, the ten-eleven park, uh, storage deals.
Oh, great.
One of the biggest problems you have in car parks, garages, and so forth, is they're not ever used, they're storage rooms, and cars are all parked out front. So I do like that storage stuff.
Right. And everyone around here, they're gonna have toys, bikes, and let's call it what it is, bikes, kayaks.
Toys.
Ski equipment.
Important stuff.
Yes.
So one.
No, please, go ahead.
I don't see a landscaping plan, so when you get to your final submission.
That is for.
Okay, and so that would be, I think, an important feature enhancement for this.
Why, they don't really have to do any landscape, they could just use, it's existing landscaping.
I am hoping.
Well, if they are gonna add lighting, they might wanna.
That they will have a landscaping plan that fits within the historic character of what would have been.
Yeah, and that is also too, predicated by the N P A standards, so we'll, we'll.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question about terminology on your front cover piece. You use the terminology here, R two. And I mean, we don't have zoning or, so what did R two represent?
R two is a reference to the I B C, the International Building Code. It refers to the building occupancy type. So it means multifamily, essentially, of a certain size.
And. So you, you talked about the water issues that affected the basement. Is that a groundwater issue?
So my understanding is everybody in that part of Bethel has water.
I was gonna say, you've got two neighbors, so potentially.
Okay.
He's here for something else.
Oh, okay, and.
You've got a brook running right down through there, just up the road a little bit that's all covered up.
Okay.
It comes down. It's, it's, Jim, how's that come down through there? It comes, comes down through.
There's two, you get the exposed partial one, but then you get the main brook that runs literally under town.
Yeah.
Comes down.
You're gonna have water.
Through Philbrook.
Have more.
So.
Comes down, crosses Main Street, goes under I G A.
Yep.
And under a couple houses down that direction, basically.
I'm sure that they're, I'm sure that they've looked at what they're, what's gonna require for some pumps and groundwater issues. I don't think they really need to get into too much detail on what they need to talk about.
Well, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, part of what we'll be looking at is a storm water management plan, anything to do with, you know, whether there's anything you can do to improve it, make sure it doesn't affect abutting properties or the like, make it, in other words, that anything that happens there isn't making it worse for others around. So we'll look for that in the plan as well. Do you, or can I keep going?
Yeah, well, can I, can I say something to that first?
Sure.
So one thing I've been trying to track down is that, my understanding is that at some point, it may have been in the early nineties when N T L did a big renovation. Well, they didn't, they did more like an upgrade.
I remember that, yeah.
They put in a lot of systems and did a bunch of work. My understanding is that they put in a.
French drain?
I don't think it was a French drain, but it's, it's a system that all, that directs all the water toward the front of the property.
There was, there was a catch basin type French thing put in.
Okay, so.
I don't remember how it ended up. I dealt with it, there were a lot of fire call stuff, vacants and alarms going off. And it, it could be, at this point in time, I wouldn't be surprised if there's branches that have gotten in and it's just backed up.
Yeah.
I don't know how extensive it is at this point, but there was stuff. And I think if you work with John, I, it, well, there might not have been any plans.
Might not have been any drawings, but.
She's gone through all the files.
Have you been able to find any of the catch basins or anything within the property, or is that what you're looking for?
I haven't looked, I don't know. But, but I, I think, so I think it was, who's the two generations up in D A Wilson?
I was just gonna say, if you talked to Doug, I'm pretty sure Doug did that project.
Yeah.
And Doug will have that.
That's always my concern.
Okay, this is, this is, sorry, but this, this is the small-town stuff, you know? We all wear two hats. I sold that building once, I'm a broker, and and I was amazed by the condition of the basement. I never saw a drop of water in that basement.
So I don't think it had water until recent, because we got, it looked like, you could see very little water evidence, but then this summer.
Was it on the edges?
This summer, it just came right through the foundation.
I bet it was, oh, yeah.
I have somebody helping me, actually, Dana's husband, Zach, is it Lewison? Is that how you say it? Anyway, he was saying, he thinks that probably just what you said, Jim, that some of the drainage system is blocked, and it's causing it to come back in.
And we got live forfeit made.
And we got live forfeit made, yeah.
But you know, the other thing is, I'm pretty confident that's reverse grade yet. There's some big old shrubbery still around there? Yeah, and at, at that age, it has to have reverse grade, and no one's touched it in years. So I think when we do the landscaping plan, that's all gonna.
That's really kind of not, you know, pretty, is it? Uh, basement water, no.
Storm drainage is.
Storm water is.
Storm water is.
Their basement can flood and.
Yeah, go for it.
Planning board does not have a say.
One other question, and that is, can you just give us an overview of the other approvals you will have to obtain for this project to go forward at the state or federal level?
Oh. They're going to the fire marshal's office.
I don't think we're gonna have to do fire marshal, and, I mean.
I think you do, because you're multifamily, you're gonna go for multifamily. It's gonna end up having you sprinkled, but it's already sprinkled. I think you do. I could be wrong, but I think you do.
That'd be a Jodri question, wouldn't it?
Was that?
Yeah, Michael.
Well, I did ask, he didn't think that we would have to. And he's, I think there's, I've heard three different people say that, so obviously.
Jodri on it.
Yeah, so obviously we'll quadruple check, because that's something we don't wanna get too far in. But I don't think there's anything else that we're.
Okay, so just for the tax credits, you have to.
Yeah, the tax, for the financing for tax credits will have to.
That's right.
Yeah, the National Park Service. We'll follow, report to with the state, the State Preservation Office, and the National Park Service.
We'll, we'll report to, um, with the state, Mr. Preservation Office and the National Park Service.
Does this have project? And you, and you, don't laugh at me, have anything to do with L D two thousand and three, are you utilizing? Nothing to do with it, is it Woodhull? Do I see? Aren't they?
I'm not dumb, but I'm fairly new at Woodhull, so I don't know.
I put two and two together, cause I think Woodhull's involved with it.
We've got them all, yeah.
Yeah.
We've got a lot more stuff.
Um, Jim, what do you have?
One question I had, Sherry.
Yeah.
One question, and I, I was able to meet with her team, and I'm sorry, I forgot your first names.
Mine is Amy.
Amy.
Yeah.
And I was able to meet with her team, uh, and look at some of the ideas, you know, just more of a just, I mean, greet kinda look at ideas. One of the things that they did take into mind, consideration was my concern of parking. Was making sure that, you know, a lot of times when it snows and you have parking where you have cars next to each other, it's gonna be very difficult for these cars to get out. Especially if you don't have it plowed and right away, they're gonna be trying to get out to get to the snow or whatever. And what did you, I know that we had talked about that, and looking at how you were gonna try and organize your parking to where we had. Maybe one line of cars to where it was able to plow, and then that one line of cars wouldn't be affected by that. Is that something that you still took into consideration?
Yes, and, and we, uh, so that's something that we worked with the principals with together on, um, and so we're kind of following their, their lead on that. They had, um, sort of a consistent scheme for the parking where it runs along the whole site and it's a single line, so it would be easy for that, uh, snow management.
That was just one of my concerns, and, and also having an alternative exit, for example, a lot of times. And I'm, I'm only from experience in the snowstorms, and a lot of times you get one exit that's closed and everybody's still trying to get out, and do you have an alternative way? To get, you know, say a plow can clear this way, cars can go this way while he plows this way.
Absolutely, and, and like in this chart, proposed, uh, Garing House, uh, project, we had the Broad Street connect hopefully with Fairway Road, so you have two exits. And then that future development, I believe, showed two, two connections to Fairway Road, so.
Will that, I mean, and I'm just asking a question, will that, how your traffic pattern will be, will that be on a drawing somehow, where we can? Be able to see that, or will it, you know?
For the house itself?
Yeah, for the.
Oh, I see, yeah, I think, kind of is, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, okay. Yeah, it has to be.
Simple.
Okay.
Um, for the Garing House.
Cause we're not worried about the additional development right now, you're just worried about existing.
Yeah, they have to give us that.
Sure, okay.
Right. How, is this considered one lot, this ten acres?
It's three separate.
Yeah, on our tax maps, it is broken up as three and then like a skinny little slice, um, I mean. If the same person owns a lot, they do have the ability, um, there's a code on it somewhere, an ordinance or procedure. That on the tax maps, if they wanna combine it, they have every right to, they can just write a letter to the assessor's office and then, um, the assessor usually will meet with you and. Like in this case, it's not like you're trying to, it's not like you're doing it because of tax purposes, it would make sense to do it because you're gonna all be told. Combined.
One ownership.
And actually, it does state in, in trio right now, it is taxed as one lot, on our maps, it still shows three separate lots, so.
Well, it, I, I've got the same thing, it's two, it's still three lots, but you just get one tax, but you've just combined it, cause it's, it's.
Contiguous.
Yes.
Yeah, would that affect it being in a historic site, though, if you take that whole lot and it become one lot? No, okay, no, you can, you can have a lot that's, half of it's in the historic district and half of it isn't, as long as it's two hundred feet.
Okay.
The other half isn't under, doesn't have to have any separation.
Yeah.
Sure, question mentioned this, uh, uh, something about some road tying in to Broad Street. Could you repeat what you said in that line? And I'm assuming that you refer to the road to the fairways.
It's the other, that would be Fairway, you know, we're coming to the property from the backside, right?
Right, it would kind of come from the north side.
There's an entrance.
Yeah.
There's already an entrance there from.
You're, I'm sorry, what now?
There's an entrance, if you were to drive straight through Broad, straight past Garing, past the old N T L buildings that, so it just tore down eight years ago, roughly. It's all growing in now, but there's still actually parking that there in the street shot coming back onto Fairway, on the corner of Fairway.
So, but you're not ta, talking about tying into the road that circles around to the, uh.
That's Fairway.
That's Fairway.
So you're not talking about tying in.
That is what they're talking about.
For future development.
My question to Courtney. I heard it was, who owns it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Fairway, that.
Gary, Gary, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, Fairway is owned by the Buckle Line.
But there may be something in it, in his name or something, I'm guessing.
There may be something in that wrapped in, but, so my, part of that question is. Wouldn't it just be easier to run off a town plowed road, town old road, which is Broad Street, and the entrance is already there? Versus trying to tie in to a private road that can be, could be an issue?
Yeah, I think, um, because of some of the issues John was talking about with plowing and access, and once we do build out eventually the rest of it. Um, there's gonna need to be more opportunities for flow. Um, so I think, um, uh, we've had a conversation with, um, not directly with Gary, but with Tori at the Buckle Line about this. And kind of started to prime the conversation around, you know, this is something that's gonna be coming up and we're gonna wanna be talking about this and. Um, so I think the road issue is to be determined, like what we're gonna, what our role is gonna end up being and, and what that's gonna look like. She also said that she thinks it looks like there's gonna be maybe two other developments that are gonna be using that road as well. So, we may need to be rethinking what that road is and how it's, um, how it functions and, um. So, that's kind of all to be determined, um, and then the, the condos, of course, use it. And my understanding is from them, cause I've met with them a few times, that there's confusion about who's supposed to maintain the road. Um, and obviously it's in pretty big disrepair, and then when we start using it for construction and then for housing, um, you know, obviously. We're gonna use, have, put a little wear and tear on it, so we'll wanna make sure we're, having those conversations ahead of using the road.
But that'll be our, we'll have to address that in phase two, right?
Yeah, but we want to start the conversations now, especially if there, Tori said they might be considering doing some of the, um. I mean, they're trying to plan for maintenance on that road, um, which I would imagine would be pretty expensive.
Cause that was a public trail off that road, too.
Well, and then there's the, the, and then the, the B T trails, yeah, and the Buckle Line trails are all there, yeah, I mean, other people, right, people use it to go to the trails. Use the trails for biking and running and walking and stuff.
You're showing a, um, A one hundred, a proposed trail access to a, is that proposed by you or proposed by others?
That is currently where people cut through the site, so we're just keeping it there for now, if we can refine it later, we will. Um, but that is to keep the access that approved through the site to the north.
It's a map plan, so, yes, I apologize.
Sorry, we were lost.
So, I just didn't know if that was, um, something that was there already or.
Yeah, A four illegal, yeah.
You're not thinking about an elevator, right?
Thinking about that.
An elevator? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure. How the national parks. Stuff and guidelines. Balance out between our town codes and our historic district codes. So that's just something we're gonna have to figure out, like if, if our lighting says. One point five panel and downcast, but forest says, oh, you can have it this, well, guess what?
Always the strictest codes, always.
Always the strictest generally leaning life safety rules, so.
Yeah, that's about everything.
Right.
Strict as code wins.
And they may have additional considerations on what type of lighting or full cutoffs or, or something like that.
And, and I don't know if we've ever dealt with it, but they may have stuff that we might like better.
Well, we're working with a historic consultant to help us through the process, and she's generally very good at, um, recommending, um, things that are in, within the N P A guideline.
What did you say you were working with?
A historic consultant, Margaret Reitner.
She's right up here.
Oh, okay.
And none of the, none of the roof, other than roof repair.
Roof is gonna be replaced. In time.
Yeah, I mean, if, where I was going is none of that's gonna be changed height wise, right?
No, no, roof line is gonna stay, we are proposing two new skylights to bring in a little bit more light into the third floor. But, um, those are in very selective locations where they're concealed by the building structure.
So, just as a function of when we go through this in, um. Truth site plan review, we go through, uh, determining that you have standing and this property has been put into an L L C?
It's owned by our, our nonprofit organization.
It says.
The Sustainable Forest Futures, is that on there, yeah, so, um, what we do with our, so Northern Forest Center is the, the primary organization, and then we have within. We have a subsidiary organization called Sustainable Forest Futures that holds all of our properties.
So you just have to provide documentation about that?
Yeah.
Because the applicant. You know, has to have standing, has to own it, and we have to understand the connection back to you and all of that.
So, um, so what do you, what do you?
Well, the.
If you come in and see me, I can pull up some of that.
According, go, go back all through all that.
We will sometimes get different names on the paperwork.
Yeah.
It'll be this app, you know, applicant, it could be your name, and then there'll be something else, and then the deed will say something else. We just need everything to align.
Yeah, and she sounds like it.
Yeah. Courtney, what, what is your timeframe on this?
We are targeting, um, the site plan review with you guys in a few weeks, um, same timeline for National Park Service, Submental for the part two. Um, and then we are targeting starting construction in late first quarter, early second quarter next year.
Okay, wow, you're checking in.
I, I thank you so much for this, does anybody else have any questions about it? I think the parking is gonna be an issue, what?
I haven't reviewed the file close enough. Should they present this as a whole new site plan, or should it be a site plan amendment, I know it's just, they're gonna need all the same information regardless? But I don't know which way you wanna do it.
I don't think it's a. Especially with the complexity of phase two.
It's a.
Well, we're not worried about that right now.
Yeah, but.
But yeah, okay, so put it through as a full site plan.
Yeah, it, it, it's been closed for too long.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, I mean, the paperwork is the same, what they have to provide is the same, I just, it's a wording at the top.
And it's such a massive change of views.
Yeah, well, and essentially, it's, it's wording at the top of the paper, I mean, you guys will still have to hit all the same standards, so.
Yeah.
What would it be an amendment to, Paul's?
Yeah.
The old site plan?
It would be whoever that guy was that tried to develop that into.
Do we even have?
Yeah, he.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right, I was going about that, yes.
He was approved and he got extensions and it was, what, ten, not even ten years ago.
And he.
Yeah.
Right.
He was in here, the paperwork goes from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah.
Over five years, he, and then, but he got approved.
Yes, he went through some.
And he amended once or twice?
Like towards the end, he did get approval and he got, um.
Extensions.
The, um, park service credits almost approved, there was like one more condition he had to do, but then it had fallen apart by then, so. But like the, that kind of proved to us this, that the park service.
Our ordinances have changed too since he did that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very little, but yeah.
I mean, well, it's, it's timeframes are, like if you don't do it in two years substantially start, then it's gonna start all over.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Yeah, it used to be you could get an extension and that is no longer the case, so you cannot get an extension, so if it's not started.
Right.
Okay.
I think it sounds like.
Any other question?
I love the intake process, it, it's sort of more of a little workshop and a conversation, then it makes it so much easier when you, when you come, thank you.
Um, I want to ask about the submittal process for the site line review.
Yeah.
Um, the rules for the planning board state that the submittal should come in two weeks prior, but we had, we had to wait three weeks, okay.
It is three weeks.
Okay, we had planned for three weeks.
Where does it say two weeks?
Yeah, I thought they saw two weeks in the paper.
Yeah, it's in the, um, procedures for the planning board.
Okay, so maybe it hasn't been updated in a while, cause that did get updated last, I mean, a couple of years ago.
On the website?
On the website, yeah.
Okay, so I'm actually gonna make a note, because that did get changed a couple of years ago.
Which I should mention too, that there, um, I actually wasn't able to open that document, um, you guys were able to somehow, but it was weird. It's not just a click and open the document, so it was hard to find.
All right, I'll note it and I'll.
Problems that get to the process, the procedures.
Yeah.
Things were redone not too long ago and.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
I think I did add it like dot P E S at the end, so it's not super intuitive, but it's somehow.
And I will note that there is no end of November meeting, I think I made it.
Yeah, you did.
Due to the.
So we're looking at the thirteenth of December.
Okay, perfect.
There's no end of December we can meet.
Potentially.
We know.
Christmas.
Yes.
We'll really try to be here for December thirteenth.
Is it the thirteenth?
I think so.
Yes, it is, it's right on my paper, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All we need, yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care, I'll be seeing you around. Let me give you one more card. In case you need to call me or anything.
Yeah. Good luck with everybody.
You can make any decisions to it. No, you cannot.
Also, Courtney. Sorry, if anybody wants like more Northern Forest Center info, I just brought a couple panels.
Yeah, that's great.
Just for background, we'll.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, okay.
If you'd like to, uh, you may do the next card.
Okay, yeah.
So, next is John Rataf, how are you?
Me, yeah.
So you wanna do a little addition on there to put in a bathroom, is that?
Bathroom, laundry, little bit closet space.
Okay, um, I think, well, Jim mentioned, brought to the point, uh, so, do you know the pitch of this roof? Cause we need the height on here, all the way, we need this number.
With the whole wall.
You got a fourteen by ten, but what's this number?
I don't know, I'll tell you why, I, I paid to have, uh, a real architectural drawing done. And we realized very quickly, originally we wanted to do a bathroom and, uh, master bedroom and bath. And we noticed immediately it was too much coming off the side of the house, it, it did affect the sightlines, it, it didn't look architecturally right and so forth. So I just amended that myself, thinking that, try to get the overview tonight and get your blessing at a high level, and if you needed specifics like that. Cause I'm probably gonna have to go back to the guy who did the architectural to get those details for the building.
Okay, it's such an easy.
What are you looking at, Johnny?
So, this.
See this here? Here it says twelve four.
It's a four twelve.
Or does it say that?
That's on this, that's side elevation.
Oh, I never saw that, so that's gonna be.
Four feet, so is it a little over four feet?
Another four feet.
So it's, it's fourteen, right, am I right?
Basically, yeah, it's.
Is that right?
Pretty close.
Okay.
We obviously, we'd like to get as much pitch as we can.
Yeah.
Right, and, um, also, there's a, there's a bay window next to it. And. And we want it to mimic the look of the bay window, that's why it'll have a hip roof, so it'll sort of look like a bigger version architecturally of that bay window.
It's a little, it's a little less, it's like thirteen.
In this.
It's like thirteen feet, because you're, you're twelve. But it's close.
Fourteen foot long.
Cause you're, you're a four, twelve, so for every, going up twelve feet.
Actually, it's a four and twelve, it's gonna be.
You're going, you're going four feet, but they're only going.
They're going fourteen.
Oh, this is too far for me.
If it's a four and twelve.
Fourteen for it. Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Laura. Everything on this elevation page has a lot of symmetry, and then you've got the window.
So every twelve feet.
Although we get to any.
Hello?
I think John's looking this up for us.
So it'll be roughly fourteen.
Well, um.
Okay.
I, I noticed when I looked at the packet, everything here is very symmetrical, if that's the right word. And then you have a this, like you didn't make the window in that fashion. Was there a reason for that?
Yes, I was trying to save some money, and I'll explain why. The original drawing that was done costs a fair bit of money. And then, the way I thought this process would work is, I thought I could come and get a general blessing, that you're okay with the bump out, the setbacks are met. It's gonna be painted white, the roof's gonna, it's gonna meet all the historic district codes, and then if that's okay, I'm probably gonna have to go back to the architect that did the original drawing, spend more money to get it done, so it's exactly what. But I thought it's gonna be a showstopper, if I got here tonight and you folks said, no, you can't bump out here.
But I mean, it isn't the bump out, we've done those for, for, you know, I, I, where, what I would be concerned about, what I am concerned about is, I don't think this window placement.
Well, that's not viewing the road, correct? That's viewing trees?
No, that one is viewing the road. Oh, which one are you looking at?
No, this is.
That's side elevation.
Yeah, well, and here's, here's another thing that I, I don't know yet. I don't know exactly how I wanna lay out the inside. And until I get that figured out, and again, it was predicated on, are you gonna let me go fourteen, can I do, once I know how big the bump out can be, again, I wanna go back to the architect, get the inside layout done, and that'll dictate exactly where the windows are gonna go. And when the architect does the drawing, those windows will be exactly dimensional. This is just my own drawing.
Yeah, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, one of the things that we're bound to, when we, when we approve the permit for the historic district on the application, one of the standards we have to meet is that, whatever you're doing in the addition, is, you know, keeping the integrity of what is there already. And I'm saying to you, in my opinion, this does not keep the integrity. And, you know, I, I get the need for functionality, but I think you need to make sure this window flows the way the rest of the house flows, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that that window's a little, but you know, I think that, I think what you're saying is, you want to do a preliminary, you see if it's gonna be a go. I don't see, I, I can't speak for the board, you know, I mean, I don't think it's a problem, but I don't think we can do anything without the final drawing.
Yeah, I don't see any, for myself, I don't see any.
We haven't even, does he have standing, or does he need standing?
He doesn't need.
Doesn't need standing, doesn't need financial aspects or anything like that?
We just have to make sure that the standards that are in our paperwork are met.
Yeah.
I, my, I, I agree with Lori, and I think my personal, yes, but we don't have all the info. We don't have what the roof is gonna be, what the siding's gonna be.
Well, he did, in his letter, give us quite a bit.
Yeah.
I mean, but, I mean.
But still. I mean, as far as my two cents on answering your question, I would say, yes, but. The stuff needs to be fixed before we can say.
I, I thought it was the final drawing, so they have to sign it once something's approved, so they wouldn't be able to approve it if this isn't the final drawing. Cause this goes in your file.
Do you have the deck on here too?
No, that's on the back.
The deck?
The deck's on the.
It's on the back.
It would be on the back.
Oh, okay. But you didn't draw that?
No.
Okay, we'll need that too, John.
Oh, you're putting a deck on?
Yes. Look it in the letter.
So, again.
And the railings are important, for the deck, yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Any, any lighting to do?
Is the deck visible from the roof?
No.
I need, no.
Neither of that window.
I get that, but.
Well, the front window is.
Oh, that, this, this one here, yeah.
Yes.
That's the front window, but not this one.
But, you know, I mean, and I've said this before, if we start sort of minimizing the intent of keeping historic design, might as well just, or the whole thing, you know, I mean, you are getting, in my opinion, you know, your home has some extra value, or being in this protected zone, and you bought it with that knowledge uncertain, and, you know, I think that it's, we're being tasked with making sure that we're not seeing things that are diminishing the impact of the historic district as it has on our community. And so, to me, whether the deck's visible from the street or not, the home is in the district, unless you're telling me that the back piece of the property is not in the district.
The first two hundred feet are, my concern would be.
Just to hold up.
Where is the standard that has to do with things, like most of, I just wanna make sure you guys are hitting a standard when you're talking about this.
I get it.
So it discusses like, the height, and it discusses the front elevation, and it discusses windows, and it talks about entrances to sidewalks, which don't matter here. Materials, texture, and color that shall be visibly compatible with predominant material used. Roof shape and the size and mass of the structure, so it doesn't discuss rear elevations.
But it doesn't say.
So I just wanna make sure you guys are hitting a standard when you're.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't say that it's only the front elevation unless I'm reading this wrong.
One B says the relationship of the width to the height of the front elevation shall be compatible with buildings, public ways, and places to which it's visually related, so the top of this.
Yes, but visually related is visually.
The front elevation.
The front elevation, that's one standard, okay. The height, the front elevation shall be compatible with other buildings, I get it, but the relationship of the width, height shall be compatible with buildings, public ways, to which it is visi, visi, visually related, doesn't say front elevation, and I think it's important for you to keep that symmetry, that's just my opinion. And it influences how I vote.
And when you have your architect who draw this, 'cause he didn't draw a red hip roof.
Yeah, so that talks about windows and sidewalks, so I just wanna make sure you guys are hitting standards when you're doing this stuff.
I think the standard is such that we can, myself, from personal opinion.
So on your drawing, that's just a slanted roof?
That's 'cause I couldn't, I didn't know how to draw a hip roof from that answer.
Oh, you drew this?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This one's not a hip, this, not a hip roof.
Again, that's my, my best attempt.
Okay, so you did this piece too?
Right, yes.
So this, this front porch is a hip roof?
Yes, and so is the bay window.
Right.
And, and so what I did was, I just wrote on top of that to say, I want it to look like that bay window.
Okay.
And the, and part of the height of everything was gonna be predicated on, you know, what we have to work with on that wall, 'cause there's two windows up above.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, that, that makes sense.
So, so just to, just to reiterate for a second, so I, 'cause I wanna just set the standard here. We've had this house for twenty-eight years, and we've bought it for its historic charm, and I think anybody that's driven by it has seen, you know, my wife and I are out there tired of improving that property. And we've also taken care of a lot of people, tenants who were down on their luck, who we held in there with them, and we didn't have, when we were younger, we didn't have much either. So, I think we've tried to be respectful to the town as well in terms of helping the town people. We're now changing the model a little bit, because we're at a different stage in our lives. And again, today, I know this drawing's not perfect, I just didn't wanna spend a bunch more money with the architect until I got like, are you okay with us doing a bump out? It's gonna be white, I want it to look as much like the original house as you do, believe me. I want it to look like it's been there forever, and if I need to go back now and go to the architect's say, they need to know exactly what the roof pitch likes. They need the window to be exactly what we're, I'm happy to go do that, but I didn't wanna go spend another five hundred thousand dollars and show up and have you say, no, the rules say you can't bump out at all.
No, that's what I can't.
I'm happy to go get this much more detailed, but for the purposes of tonight's meeting, picture that bay window, kind of a look and feel with the hip roof. And again, the windows, until I, I've been messing around with the inside, and until I actually figure out this is where the closet's gonna go, I can't really place the windows. So I was just trying to do this conceptually.
Yeah.
And this.
So I have two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Where's that gonna be on this drawing? Is that gonna be off of this piece or off of here?
It would be.
Or some other place?
It would be right here.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so is that gonna have, is that gonna have a fireworks porch? Is that gonna have a roof over that piece?
No. No, no, it's just a little deck.
So it's, so in this drawing, it's gonna sit?
Yes.
It's gonna sit here?
Exactly.
So how's that gonna get accessed?
There's gonna be a doorway.
Off of this?
Yes, there's gonna be like a, a full nine light door, so you can go directly out to that little deck right there.
Okay, so we need all that.
We need all that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And the rail, if you have to have it, I know, somebody inches, is it eighteen inches, you don't need railings?
No.
It's not for the elevation.
No, it's less than that.
Yeah, he'll be able to get all that, if you don't know.
Yeah, but I'm talking if you need railings or not.
Well, this is an area that my wife and I disagree. I, I just. Oh, wives, we agree on everything. I just wanna have the door go out a couple of steps and have a little patio.
Right, yeah.
But she.
I think it's, I think it's six inches, I think, I could be wrong.
It's gonna be whatever the riser is, so.
But I think it's six, I think it's anything over a foot you have.
The riser's eight.
I think.
Yeah, and you can.
Could be wrong.
It's code, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I understand, I've dealt with lots of codes.
Yeah, so just find out what that is, 'cause if it's not high enough, you won't need railings, 'cause you'll need to show us railings.
It's.
Right. If you're gonna have a deck, we'll need to see the railings, if they have to be there, and you'll have to tell us how high up the ground it is.
Yeah.
If there are no railings.
So you, you mentioned earlier to the previous folks, your schedule for the next few meetings. So if I were to go back to the architect tomorrow and say, hey, these are their concerns, this is what we need in more detail, happy to pay for more detailed drawing, when's the next time I could?
Uh, Courtney will.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna have a November eighth meeting, 'cause that's two weeks from today.
You, we need three weeks, right?
We're supposed to have three weeks, so if I don't get the stuff until, say, he brought, even if he brought in tomorrow, I don't work again until Tuesday, so that would give me a week.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you're sitting there, well.
So it would be just, it would be December thirteenth. What?
What did you have?
I, I was just thinking, if, the standards for the historic different district and the findings are a lot less. If we could, and you could get the stuff back in time, you're here, uh, you're here, when are you back?
Tuesday.
But, that would give us a week and a half.
But we need to get a butter notice, isn't it?
No, we don't do a butter notices.
Don't do a butter.
By select board yet. That would give me. No, it's not enrolled a procedure yet, it needs to go to select board, so, that would give me a week. I mean, I, I have other boards that I have meetings on, so, that's why the two weeks was put in there minimum.
Were you planning to start this, John, right?
Well, I was worried about frost and digging a foundation and so forth, and my contractor said he can go right into December, because there's some type of forms that he planned to use. My, my hope was to get a weather tight shell on the side of the house in December, and then we were just gonna stop. And then in the spring, I was gonna come back, and I do a lot of this work myself.
Okay.
And just work on the inside.
I, I was just trying to figure a way to help, but it's up to these guys.
Yeah, well, I have no idea, I didn't deal directly with the, the guy who did the drawings, I dealt with my contractor, so I have no idea how quickly this person can turn around, so. This may be of a point, I don't know.
Then maybe it's safe to plan for December thirteenth, and you can stay in contact with Courtney.
Yeah.
Try self safer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm just recapping in my mind's eye, we need exact roof pitch, we need exact window placement, if there's going to be a deck, we need to see height, rails, all.
What colors?
But the bump out idea is not, is not a problem.
That's not the issue, that, that we're not.
It's the details that is, deserve that matter.
So, the other thing, your windows have to match your other windows.
So they're, how many lights they have, you talked about a door, we didn't see anything above the door.
That has, that has to match.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. Like you said, I'm learning through this, plus I've never gone through this before, I didn't realize it had to be like that level of detail where, I, I thought it was a big picture, like, am I approaching the setbacks? Am I putting lighting up there? Am I gonna paint it blue? Like, none of that's gonna be a.
That's why we're saying there's really not a big issue with this, but the details do matter.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
And this drawing, if you're gonna get, gonna go into your folder, it's gonna be there for who knows how long.
Yeah.
Whoever you, whoever you sell it to and, or whatever it to. Yeah, so, it has to be.
Yeah. Okay, I think I understand, and so December thirteenth, and I just worked you in the meantime, Courtney, and get the final things to you.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, it's been quite a learning experience.
Sorry.
Not only that, but what my neighbors are doing.
Yeah.
I know it worked out for you to be here tonight.
Yeah.
If you don't, you know, sometimes a contractor represents the owner and meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, my contractor wasn't real comfortable, of course.
I get that.
They're just people, we're just gonna talk to them, ask them what to do, he's, he doesn't like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're so intimidating.
He's shy, that's okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, I'll get the drawings much more.
Is your contractor welcome?
Yes. Mick Kelly?
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Isn't it Mike?
Well, it's Mike and Mick, Mick's the dad.
He's, he's come.
Mike.
He has come.
He has come to the planning board.
But he, he came in to me like months ago, was like, I'm doing another, you know, addition. It's in the, it's in the historic district, isn't it? I knew you were gonna tell me that, and I'm like, actually it is.
Yeah.
And he's like, why do I always pick the, we pick the ones?
Mike has, Mike has a good, he doesn't give himself enough credit.
No, he would be fine.
He said to me, he, he said, he goes, he's always rubbing his head, he goes, you seen that brick building on Route twenty-six there? And I said, you mean the high school? And I said, yeah, he said, well, that's, that's as far as I went with my education. But then he'll say, he'll, he'll look at a roof line and he'll say, you want that to be a hip and it should have an overhang, does it?
He did, he did your addition, correct?
Yeah, are you talking about Mick or Nick? Yeah, well, I'm talking with Mike right now, but I've also, yeah, Mick is, yeah, they, they do good work.
Mike, Mike is good, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, he was the one also, you know, he's driving the schedule, that's what he's all, he's trying to book this, so.
Yeah.
I guess, I'd go out on a limb and tell him if we get the. I guess, I'll go out on a limb and tell him if we get the, I think we'll get the blessing from you if we give you the details and specificity for the thirteen, right? There's nothing, there's no other major red flag, okay? Awesome.
Just specifics.
Well, we'll see at the IGA or.
Yes, yes. We will.
All right, thank you folks, appreciate it.
Yeah, do we have anything else?
Oh, we might as well talk about something.
I just want to talk about the upcoming meeting, so, just because we were talking about that, we have November eighth. And we have December thirteenth, okay.
And you, are you questioning whether or not we have a meeting on November eighth?
I haven't gotten anything new, so we will not.
So we do not have a meeting?
No, you still have a meeting.
So are we canceling November?
We have an assessor, we have an assessor meeting in the morning, but there will be no flitting board. I, I have, I have mountains of people coming through the door that have projects that want to present, they just need to eat all their stuff together.
Yeah.
Um, like, I actually was unaware this was in this final drawing, I was, I didn't know he had another drawing. That was, that was news. So, yeah, I, I have several people, they just. I really hope they don't all wait until April and May again, and we're booked through the summer, backed up six months, but I think you never.
How do I want to put this? When somebody comes into your office for something like it, do you have a, kind of like a cheat sheet you can pass them?
I give them the finding of facts, and say, this is what they're gonna be looking for.
Yeah, but that, that's also a, is it the finding of facts that goes down step by step, everything that that's supposed to be doing?
For the, for the, I don't know what you're referencing, the historic district or, there are two separate things. Do you mean historic district or site plan?
Yeah.
Either, you mean the, you mean the application.
Okay, so for building permits in the, in the historic district, there is no application. They come in, I say, these are the finding of facts, these are our standards, this is our chapter in ninety-six whatever building codes, this is what they're gonna be looking for. You know, for any stuff, we'll go over it, because you don't need deeds and financial capacity and all of that stuff, it's, it's typically fairly easy. Site plan, they have an application, and then typically, I mean, I have several emails, I have one right now that the people said, hey, this is what we're looking to build, this is what our building's gonna look like, what else do we need? And that's when I say, well, here's our chapter, here's our standards, here's our finding of facts. You need, you know, your deed, your financial capacity, your stormwater.
Everything it said knows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when do they get the application?
Immediately, a lot of people just print it offline, actually, I don't even really hand out that many.
Yeah.
And then they'll contact me and say, well, what do we need? And that's when I send them all of that and say, this is it. And then they'll submit it, and then usually I'll, well, I do, always, then I review it, and then I'll say, hey, you know, what are you doing about lighting, do you have a lighting plan? What are you gonna do about dumpsters? Because some of those things, there's no way to answer them besides with a finding of fact, so that's how I know, like, they're gonna screen their dumpster with wood, or whatever.
They just think like he didn't have a good grasp on what he was supposed to bring in.
No, he, I, I, I actually, I didn't know that he had another drawing, I thought that was his final, I thought that was his final plan, I, I didn't know that he had architecture.
If he's using the same boy that I did, that kid can knock that thing out in a hot minute. He's the architect or designer, did mine, and it's not that expensive relative.
Yeah, the other issue with if we were to be on the eighth, A, I have another board that I need to catch it out for. But B, the other thing too, is, when I first took over Sarah's, one big thing is, we don't want you guys to come in for something that's gonna take fifteen minutes, we want to at least try to get a couple things knocked out, instead of.
Yeah, but it's unfair to, it's unfair to hold an applicant out.
Fifteen minutes, if, if.
Me too.
If it's a situation where, if you don't come in for fifteen minutes, it's gonna have to wait for three months for something else to come in.
Well, it wouldn't wait for three months, but I mean, typically, I mean, you guys are volunteers, you were not, it is not a paid, paid volunteer position, so Sarah always said, don't waste their time with a applicability hearing or a small.
But that, you know, for me, when we get close to the winter season, and I know people are trying to stack things up.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, but we get pretty slow in December, January, February, March, so hopefully people will.
I'm okay too, I guess it's just, it's a good conversation to have.
But yes, I wouldn't have time, I mean, like I said, I'm in Tuesday, I have to get maps to Whitefield next week, I have an assessor's meeting I have to prepare for, and then we have several other things happening.
So, are, are we definitely not having one on the eighth?
Correct.
So we have no meetings in November?
No, wow. Somebody would have to have stuff in by next Wednesday in order to get on the end of November anyway, and I, I have gotten nothing, so. I mean, typically, somebody would give me their stuff this week, and I would review it, and then it would be officially turned in next week, and I've, I've gotten nothing.
Okay, so, December twenty-seventh is our second December one, are we axing that one?
We only do, we only have typically done.
So that's Christmas week, so it'd be a couple days after Christmas.
That's why I'm asking, it's two days after Christmas.
Is people traveling?
It's usually, so many people are God.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, not doing.
We're just, we just say it now, so.
Well, you say it now, it's the thirteenth, you got a meeting on the thirteenth, so.
Right, right.
But I understand, you might want to make plans, so, I would say, no meeting on the twenty-seventh.
I would say we need to have a motion.
I think a motion, we have no meeting on the twenty-seventh.
That's not what I meant.
I took out.
Back up, I will say this, and Garing isn't concerned until next year. But I would potentially look at, you may, I don't know if you have to have a public hearing on that, you guys vote on that, and you may potentially need a sidewalk.
For what?
Garing is hoping to present in December.
Well, we need a sidewalk.
Yes, so, I mean, I would just plan on potentially doing that, that week of the thirteenth, they're not bothering you, so, okay. Bob Everett, motion, no meeting.
Okay, I was picking up a different kind of a motion.
Okay, no, we're not done with that, till he finishes this motion.
Make a motion, somebody.
Second it, okay.
Okay, okay, second, all in favor? Okay, I need another motion.
Make motion, move it.
Yeah, there we go.
So who needs a motion and who seconded it?
I'll let Bob.
Bob Everett, who seconded it, Jim?
Jim.
Yes, all favor.